Welcome for coming tonight. It's so nice to see so many of you. Just to explain, the annual meeting of Rye Town residents goes back decades. Well, decades. Back right back to maybe even times when the local town come together annually. And whoever was the sort of having chief, whatever, mayor, would actually report to the residents and then they would get their pitchforks out and start waving about. But please, I hope you haven't got any pitchforks.
Got my shankel.
And friendly. My name's Catherine Michael-Lilly, I'm Mayor of Rye. On this side behind you is all the Rye Town councillors. I'm not sure if all of them, but quite a few of them are there, and they're different boards. So particularly at the end of the meeting, if you've got particular issues in where you live, then please go and speak to your wall councillor. I think every wall needs representing tonight. I think they're all there, over there. A few apologies, but most of them are there. The programme for tonight is, I'm going to say a few words. We just have to go formally agree the minutes of the last town meeting, which will be on the, if people want to copy it, but it will be on my website. With it of note. So we've got an agreement about everything on that. I had to start laughing with my wife yesterday. We've got some guest speakers who are going to speak about the different projects tonight. And then at the end, after they've spoken all, they'll be open to public questions as well. That could be to the wall councillors, could be to myself, could be to the speakers. Okay, well, this is my fourth and final annual town meeting. May is the month I'll be standing down as Mayor of Rye after four years, although I will remain for 2025 as another one of the Rye Town councillors. I actually officially stand down on the fifteenth of May, which is the Rye Town Council Annual General Meeting, which will be here in this meeting at seven o'clock on the fifteenth of May. So I'm now sort of in the run to finish my final turn. There is a flurry of events in the last few weeks, including the King Charles III coronation. And there will be some events in Rye on the seventh of May, on Sunday, at St Thomas's Rest Gardens and also at the Arcade. It starts at eleven o'clock in Rest Gardens and then from twelve o'clock at the Arcade. On the actual Monday, King Charles has sort of asked for a kind of community volunteers day. And Rye Business Association, which are actually here, Rye Town Council and, oh, sorry, most importantly, Rye Town Hall, Friends of Rye Town Hall, who are leading on this, will be doing a town tidy up. So please come along to that between eleven and one. You'll be given litter pickers and bags. And particularly things important to get regular litter pick in the town centre. We recently then did one with the Hobbard Travel last Friday on the beaches. And actually, the beaches were quite clean, there was quite a lot of plastic and things, but not as much as you see on our streets. So that's a big come to London. I never intended to stay as mayor for four years, but I agreed to stay as last few years have been difficult, with the shadow of Covid nineteen, which was probably quite a long memory. People would go, that's a memory we're putting back. And obviously, the cost of living crisis. Through all that time, my message as mayor has been one of hope and supporting Rye Town Council residents to build strong community spirit and opportunities to enable our town to grow and prosper. And I'm really proud of all the community groups, all the businesses, all the different stakeholders of this town and the staff team at Rye Town Council for really coming to the place. When Covid broke out, quite a few town and parish councillors across this island closed down. Ours did not. Our staff were delivering, so youth workers like at Network Ride were delivering prescriptions. They were actually buying food for people. And at one time, we had over nearly six hundred volunteers in the town doing a variety of things. Rye Business Association gave information out regularly. And actually, most of the businesses have got all the different grants and the different things that they could do. We have survived as a town, but we have not only survived, we have grown. And actually, when the new mayor is elected, first thing they're doing is opening a new shop on Union Street. Shops are closing, but others are actually coming into them. And our visitor numbers have gone up terrifically. We're going to be talking, well, presentations of three exciting developments in the town. One, the department on Cross Street with the fabulous shade makers who made Rye proud by being in front of the Queen's Jubilee. The front of it, you're right at the front. So Rye was right at the front of the Queen's Jubilee from the skills of the puppetry in Rye. And we have some incredible artisans and innovators that actually are within this town. It's a real celebration. Also talking, Appli Tower, I'm very proud. It's taken me six years to actually get, working with Natural Enterprise, that Appli Tower is now what, major funding to actually eventually reopen and become full. And then St Thomas's Church. During Covid, our youth service completely continued. It went online and it worked. But one of the issues was the demand for young people to have that service has been incredible. And I'll give you one little story, a human story in Rye regarding. I was in the Esplanade Hotel, minding my own business, and one of the staff came up to me and said, "Oh, you're the mayor, aren't you?" I go, "Yeah, I am." And she said, "I wanted to thank you." She said, "I'm a single mum and I'm the only income in this, in our household. And I have three children. Two of them go on the Duke of Edinburgh and are active at Network Ride. And then I have a third who needs extra support. And that third one has made it difficult for me to work. But because of Network Ride, either single mum can work." And she said, "This hotel is now full because you, with the marina and the programme of events, is actually full and that keeps me in the jobs." And for me, that was the greatest thank you that you could get. Because, she said, "Without those things, her family would collapse." And that spirit came through. And one of the things with that huge demand that we now have for our youth service, which is the only bespoke youth service on the whole of the Isle of Wight, because this town, with the Isle of Wight Council, previous administration closed youth services on this island. This town stood up and said, "No." She has funded that. Problem is, a one-four-seven isn't a bit enough space. So we needed a space and we bought St Thomas's Church. And I will leave the glory of the story to Bex, who wonderfully leads on Network Ride, to tell you how this town, compared to our other councils, have got major money from doing ourselves of that. And she can tell you that story in a minute. But we've had other improvements, including historic the High Street. And I've got recently further funding to finish that. We're working with Southern Water to actually have a water scheme up the High Street so that there's less water coming down, goes in, and there's more plants inside. Rye Marina and the beaches, which, Rye Marina was in a terrible state. And actually, now, most of the berths are actually now let. And it's got a, it's really opening up or up that area. And Rye interchange, anybody's view of it, it is nearly finishing. You know, the toilets were, you know, lovely long before those reopened and started. It's coming together. Rye Town Council, forty years ago, didn't have a corporate plan, it didn't have a place plan. And it has that now. And that enabled the issues of Rye to actually feed into everything we do. And we've started to have partnerships. We've got a fabulous partnership with Rye Business Association that's had recently a new sort of influx of members. We've got a fabulous partnership with Portsmouth University. And already about three hundred students have come over here and are getting involved in projects around the town. But also, there's opportunities for young people to actually go over to things like the Ravlon, New Ravlon Sports Centre and deliver that. We've definitely are now working with Southern Water on a charter, a water charter for the town. And looking at every house in Rye has a water butt within that. It took me to go on French international television about raw sewage in Rye to get this to the table for them. But it's actually happening within that. And hopefully, there'll be more in the future. We now have, last year after Covid, we've got to have a full programme of events. This is a carnival town, when shade makers talk about the department. We are a capital carnival town in that area. We have two fantastic carnival companies, both there, in the front of the country, and shade makers. And they're a part, with Rye Carnival, of the Mardi Gras of lifebloods. They bring the town alive and involve residents, they involve businesses. But we've now got, we're capital of the beach sports. Did you know that? Most of the England team that wins things in beach football actually come from Rye. They have that. So the Beach Sports Festival has thousands of people coming. That's going to be joined by the South Island Sevens. One of the things that, it takes about a year to negotiate various new events. And for the last year, it's been very much lots of discussion. We're bringing the armed forces back into Rye because nearly ten percent of our residents who ride, in fact, I think it's about fifteen percent, are veterans. We now have a veteran hotel on the seafront, we have a veterans hub. All these things have been supported by Rye Town Council. We have a range of voluntary sexual organisations that are quite incredible and title the family support for the second year running is one, the Family Charity for the Home South of England. That's the quality of some of our charities and things. Rye Aspire now has a contract for the whole of the Isle of Wight. And I was actually told they employ a hundred, a hundred people. I don't know if that's a true, true fact. It's a target that is considerable of people, which is, you know, creating jobs. There's a, one of the most special events that I did last year was, in fact, the Royal Gymbalee. And what we did is we celebrated the seven freedoms of Rye. And it was, there's one or two here, Joyce is here and, I think that's going to be only one. Diana's not here, I can't see which is the word. But we had seven of fantastic people who contributed to the development of this town. One of them sadly has died, and that was Ray Allen. And to me, Ray Allen is a special top story in this town. It actually shows the home. For many years, Ray was a cleaner at the cinema. But he was a writer. And fifty years ago now, on television, you watch television, you watch Some Mothers Didn't Have 'Em. And he created Frank Spencer. And I think Some Mothers Didn't Have 'Em used to have nearly twenty-eight million people view, right? That programme. And he came from Rye. And he's shown that anybody, right? In our community can actually be great things. I want to see in the town future Olympic champions. I want to see writers. I want to see entrepreneurs, right? You know, like the young Alfie, you know, Alfie in the Sky sort of shop of that. We have got talent in this town. And I'm sure you won't mind me saying this, but thirty percent of us are our age group in this town, over sixty-five, right? But eighteen percent are actually under eighteen. And we have a duty to that generation to give hope for the future. And I'll add to that. And the last thing I just wanted to actually say, just in memory of Steve King. Steve King was our town crier for many years. He was a character, right? He was a veteran, right? And he was very much part of this town. He stopped being town crier before I was mayor. So I can't be the one that was responsible for him ceasing as a town crier. But he was very much a Rye person. And he summed up the character, the character of the town. So I particularly wish them to dedicate to him. So thank you, and I'll now introduce our first speaker. This is.
No, of course.
Do you want that?
Yeah.
This is Bex, who's our youth manager at Network Ride. And she's going to tell you all about the Youth Investment Fund at St Thomas's Church.
Thank you very much, Michael. Good evening. So as Michael said, my name's Bex, I'm manager of Network Ride. Anybody who knows me knows I could talk for hours about young people and our service and everything we do. But apparently, I'm limited to fifteen minutes tonight. So when John gives me the wave, I'll stop talking. So what I wanted to do was a little bit, for some of you maybe new hearing about our youth service, so as Michael's talked a little bit about it, I'm going to explain a little bit about what we do. And then around the funding that we've got from the Youth Investment Fund. But I have to do my own slides, so hopefully that'll work.
I haven't got one of the youngsters doing it.
I don't think it will. So we've been running since twenty eighteen. We're based on the High Street, right next to the Job Centre opposite Iceland. If you've ever walked past and wondered why there's a couple of computers and everything else, we are the youth service. So we provide a safe space for young people from secondary age, so year seven up to year thirteen, so eleven to eighteen, six days a week. So we are open Monday through to Friday, three P M till eight P M. And then on Saturday, we have an allotment session down at our allotment, Froy Road. All young people, if a young person wants to come join us, all they have to do is come in, fill in a registration form, and they're welcome to access any of our sessions. So last year, we worked with over two hundred young people, which is fantastic. Now, that can be they've come in once a month, or some of our young people come in. So it really depends on kind of what we offer and what that young person wants to access for us. So some of the sessions that we do, we do the after school drop-ins, we do wellbeing sessions, and we run short break sessions for young people with additional needs. We also have an allotment down at Froy Road. And we are a Duke of Edinburgh Open Awards Centre. So we currently have fifty-five to sixty young people doing Duke of Edinburgh Awards at Bronze, Silver and Gold. So we, over these holidays, we did a bronze expedition, practice expedition for fifteen young people, who are mostly year nine, so age fourteen. And then we had a silver expedition practice in the second week of these holidays. So when I'm not at the centre, I'm often following young people round in cars, making sure they're not too lost around the island. So as Michael said, one of the issues we have is we are a square room. This building, this room here is bigger than what we currently have, and we are at capacity. So especially with social distancing during Covid, because of the space, we can only actually have eight young people in at one time because of our rules and regulations. So when St Thomas's Church was put on the market, I had a phone call from, my, Lisa, I'm not sure who it was, said, "Do you want to come and have a look at this possible building? We're looking at it. Would it be possible for the youth service?" So what we did is we brought young people. So young people came down and we looked at it and we, could you imagine? Us running from here with some changes, renovations and everything else? And they said yes. So the process started in July twenty twenty, and I think we finally purchased the building in January twenty twenty-one. We had a new roof through some house funding back last year. But of course, at that point, we were like, actually, we need to work out what we're going to do with the rest of the building. So last summer, the government released the pot of money called the Youth Investment Fund. So they had over three hundred million to renovate youth spaces for young people, whether that be building existing buildings or even building buildings from scratch to support young people. So some of the criteria for the initial round of applications was owning or leasing your own building, needing some renovation work and having plans in place. We ticked all of those boxes. So we filled in the initial paperwork and I was out on one of the said D and B expeditions, sat in a lay-by near Hazy Manor, and we got a phone call going, "Hi, my name's Paul and I'm your relationship manager, you're through to the next round of the Youth Investment Fund." At which point, I kind of screened down phones, put the phone down, phoned Lisa, phoned everybody, but I think we're going to get through. From September, August through to November, I can only describe it as a challenging process, as any government funding probably is. But we went through a massive application process. We had the National Youth Agency do work, request work from young people about how many people are involved in this project, and it was a massive piece of work. And then we finally were able to announce in the twenty-seventh of March that we've got the funding. So we are one of forty-three, we are in the first two rounds of funding. So we are one of forty-three youth services across England to receive this funding. So we have just under six hundred thousand pounds, which will cover the renovation work to the church. So we're working with Tim Wander and Leah Muir, Leah's the architect and Tim's our project manager for this, to work around and start that work. So what we have done first, so if any of you follow us on social media, our stained glass windows came out last week. I've never felt so stressful watching people take pieces of glass out the window. So they've come out, they've been over in a company in Sarasey and they're being restored. And then they will be the last piece of the building to go back in before we open. What we're trying to do is maintain that balance of amazing historical building in the community, but also making it functional for a youth service and the needs of our young people. So hopefully, my next slide, because my notes are over there, is what we're looking at doing. So as you can see, so this is one of the artists, this is one of Leah's pictures, the architect's pictures of what we look to be doing. So if you look on the left, I'm not very good with my rights and lefts. On the left-hand side, we're keeping the existing queues down the side, but making them into spaces for the computers, for, we're going to have a little library, one of the bigger ones, of nice little spaces. We're going to have at the back, at the moment, it's a bit next to space, but we're going to have four confidential rooms for us to use, for other agencies to use, and for young people to be able to have a really safe space to talk to people. It will, on the corner, you can't see here, we're going to have a kitchen. So if anybody has been to Network Ride, you will know we have a kettle and a toaster. We do not have a kitchen, we do not have anything, we have antifol. So when we grow anything down at our allotment, the young people take that food home, which is great. But we don't know what happens with it when we get home. So what we're going to do within the kitchen is use that produce that the young people have grown at our allotment and bring it up and cook with it, with the young people in our building. We can tell they're quite excited we've got to this stage. So the other side, hopefully the next one should be. So this would be kind of from the kitchen, looking back. We're keeping everything within heritage colour palette. If anybody who's been in there, the top struts are quite a bit brown colour at the moment, but they can be lightened up because they're not the original paintwork. So the idea is that this building will get used. So at the moment, as I said, we're open three P M till eight P M, five days a week. So actually, what else can we do? We're going to talk to young people, we're going to find out what other sessions they want. We're going to have, the things that young people have already asked for are things like movie nights. They've asked for indoor camping, things that we cannot do where we are. So hopefully, that's really exciting. The next stage is currently is the clock in the clock tower, which I'm keep getting sent lots of interesting historic facts about all these different things from Tim. And I'm just like, oh, that's good, so what will do with it? So the clock is coming out at the start of May and going up to Heritage Restorer in Pembrokeshire, I believe. And that's going to be restored and put back so it will be working. I've just got to apparently change it once every six months. Might accommodate a member of my team for that. But that will go to happen. And then we're going to start removing the current bathrooms and things like that to then start the rest of the work going on. So we will document all of this through our social media and through Rye Town Council and on our website. So we will keep you all up to date, although it will be a building site and you can't go in, but we will keep you up to date with everything. One of the partners, Youth Investment Funds, is a small film company called Hayday. And they came down last week to video some of that work starting coming out and interviewed some of our young people. And they're going to be a partner alongside us. They're going to come down, I think, once every six months to continue that documentation and produce almost like a short film about Network Ride, our new building and everything, how it's working. I'm all right still, in a bit sometime. So one of the things for me, which is really important, is how are you involved young people today? Because actually, I might be the custodian, and Rye Town Council would be the custodian of the building, but it's the young people at the heart of this that we need to have. So as you can see, this was one of our architect's sessions. We literally had the deck chair set up. Because when I was talking to young people about what they wanted, we were in our current building. They couldn't see past kind of like the four walls that we're in. So we took them into the building. So we had three architect's sessions in there. And actually, you could see their imagination comes alive with what they were. I had to veto a lot of things. There was discussions of a walk-through shark aquarium, all sorts of, but it was getting their imagination going and seeing what could be possible and what we could fund. I also vetoed fancy nets like a Robin Hill that was from the top down to the bottom. What we're going to be doing is at the moment, we're running podcasting sessions with councillor Dogg. And actually, the young people are developing their skills and they want to podcast about the development of our building, when that, and for how that could be. So when we've got our podcasts online, I'll let you all know so you can have a listen. And young people are working on some of the various specialist organisations around the development about what we're doing. At the moment, we're just looking at the front iron gate gates and what we're going to have put in place. And actually, we're going to get the young people to design what those gates could look like. And if it's possible to have them really embedded through the D N A, site visits. And again, consultation about what additional sessions we could run. Within our funding from Youth Investment Funds and some revenue funding, so I'd be able to have some additional staff, additional sessions, so we can really embed what we're going to do. so I'll be able to have some additional staff, additional sessions, so we can really embed what we're going to do. And I think that's, yeah, so there's our social media, our Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. That was us, we were able to take a picture that we've got the funding, and I think that probably covers everything. And I'll be here for questions.
Fantastic. And you can't underestimate the amount of the amount of infrastructure of the different skills you need to actually do these projects. Four years ago, we didn't have that, and it actually has that, because to actually get, be able to cut in for government funding. And I think actually, by the one of the first, to actually be signed off, actually show the quality, the quality of work and skills we've got here. I will now go to invite Graham Biss to come up and talk about Happy Tower. This one is particularly special to me because when I first became a councillor back in, arrived in two thousand and sixteen and then in two seventeen, I arrived and found out that Ilois Council were going to sell the tower as a private beach hut. And it wasn't going to happen on my watch, and it hasn't, so I'm delighted.
So over to you, Graham. I'll let you introduce yourself. Thank you, it's okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Graham Biss from Natural Enterprise. We're a small charity up based on the island, and I guess that's the reason I'm here. Because back in two thousand and nineteen, Michael knocked on my door and said, "I'm looking for a charity." But I didn't know we actually managed that time. Possibly, the journey would have been on, perhaps would have given you a different response to your question. But Michael came to us with concern about the future of Happy. It had been shut for some considerable time, and there was some doubts over what the future held for it. And essentially, the first stage, and probably what I'll do this evening, is just take on the journey, which we've undertaken to get to this point, and also to talk about what comes next. So the first thing we wanted to do was really to establish a base position. With projects of this nature, you get to hear all sorts of different things. We wanted to establish exactly what the base position was in terms of the cost to renovate, and also, really, really important, how we could find a viable future for the tower. With projects like this, quite often you can raise the capital, that's great, but it's then what happens after that. So we had two motives, one to establish what the base position was, and also try and find a viable future. So what have we done? Yeah, brilliant, thank you. Okay. So back in November two thousand and nineteen, we produced a feasibility study, which brought together all of those component parts. And throughout the journey, we tried to involve the community as much as possible. So one of the very first things we did, certainly we attended Happy Day, and we also opened the tower on two occasions. And it was absolutely fascinating to get that feedback from you, the local community, in terms of what the tower meant to them, and also what the future should hold. And that shaped all of our plans and all of our discussions and everything which are out today. It was very much shaped by that community consultations. In two thousand and nineteen, we established the repairs to the tower cost two hundred and twenty-four thousand, and I'll come back to that later in my presentation. Off the back of the consultations we held, we started to develop some detailed plans and postings and drawings. And that was really quite important, it was really interesting. In the feasibility study, some of the future uses of the tower include a restaurant, a coffee shop, self catering accommodation, a real range of options, art gallery, of which we took all of them in to see whether they would deliver a viable business model, which retained the tower as a community asset, and I think that's really, really important. It was very dear to your heart, Michael, and we bought into that. Happy Tower is special, and I think we'll realise during this project how special it is, not just to ride, but actually to the island on a broader footing. So we took it very seriously in terms of trying to keep the tower within the community ownership. As part of the process, the second round of consultations, we went out and we sought a community partner. We're based in Newport, and we wanted someone local who could actually run the tower going forward. So we went out with the support of partners and stakeholders, we went out and invited community groups to come forward. And as a result of that, we were very fortunate, we had Monten Arts, based in Rye, came forward with their thoughts about an art gallery. So once we, due diligence, et cetera, a lot of our plans and preparations at that stage was based upon the fact that the future use of the tower would be an art gallery. So that allowed us to inform of the work we did. Also, the creation of four beach huts. And just to explain the reasoning behind that was, we were looking at a tower which had renovation costs at that time over two hundred thousand, but there wasn't all of the cash around. We had good support from Rye Town Council, we had some support from other people, but we needed more than that, and we needed to find a viable future. So we came across the idea of creating four beach huts, and the income for beach huts will actually go to support the tower going forward. It's what I call economic neighbour. So the beach huts are there, and they will be put in place for community use, but all of the income will be rolled back into the future of Happy Tower, which makes it quite a nice succinct offering, where the beach huts are working to generate income, which supports the tower in the long term, which means that we don't end up in this position in five or ten years' time. Hopefully, going forward, the tower will remain viable and profitable, and will allow the repairs to be kept up to date, which is really, really important. So what have we done? We approached Heritage Lottery Fund, and as you can tell from my original work in two thousand and nineteen, it's been quite a long journey, we've had a Covid period in between, but the heritage hot of money, national hot of money, is very, very competitive. So we knew we had one hit, one chance of securing a successful outcome. So we really had crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is, much to Michael's frustration, because you would have liked us to win it very quickly. But we felt we had one chance, we really wanted to get this right. So we went off and sought a Heritage Lottery grant of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, which I'm pleased to say has been approved. Tremendous support from Rye Town Council, the Ilois Council, and also my board, because the total cost of the project is going to be three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We needed to match the Heritage Lottery Fund, so I'm really pleased and thank you to Rye Town Council. Because without your support, it wouldn't have happened. We submitted planning application, which has been approved, and we're currently working through to discharge the various pre-renovation planning conditions. We're also waiting for final approval of building reps, which is really, really important. That's been an interesting journey, and you end up with all sorts of.
Interesting, isn't it?
Many of which, I'm pleased to say, won't feature. There was talk of having an external stair lift on the outside of the tower. If you've got a heritage hat on, you would probably go into meltdown. If you're thinking about accessibility, it's not very practical, so, and heavens would be able to move that to one side. We are dealing with one slight challenge. One of the things which I personally put into the project was the importance of being able to go to the top of the tower, and that still remains really, really important. Shoot me if you disagree, but we felt to actually open Happy Tower, not to be able to get to the top and enjoy the views, would be actually the wrong thing to do. It does mean we're incurred a lot more cost, it does mean the inside space within the tower has been slightly compromised, but that's really, really important. We've hit another snag in terms of fire regulations, which I won't bore you with, but we will get around it or overcome it. I'm sure with goodwill from the local planning authority, we will maintain the need, and I think essential criteria, which is to provide access to the tower. And I can't wait. Having worked on Happy Tower for the last few years, I haven't seen the view from the top. Our architect has, and our surveyor, but no one else has in the last ten to fifteen years. So we're really looking forward to what that view is going to show us. When we went to Heritage Lottery, whilst it was about renovation of the tower, what they're really interested in is actually how Heritage is brought alive. So alongside the renovations, we've got an extensive programme of public engagement activities, one of which is the Heritage Research Project. So if any of you are interested in Heritage and would like to take part in the research project, please let me know. We're looking to recruit researchers who will look into the history of the tower, history of the area, and history of Happy Estate. So if you're interested, please let me know, because I think the more people we can get involved with that, hopefully it will be very fulfilling, and it will help inform all the interpretation boards and displays which come forward in the next phase of the project. So what's next? Construction of the beach huts. We're waiting for planning conditions to be discharged, which is any day now, they promised me. So hopefully, the first thing you will see are four beach huts being constructed. As soon as we've got the building regulations back, we will be seeking tenders for the tower renovation work. That will be the outside, it's been interesting over the years. There's been some quite interesting renovations undertaken, which wouldn't align to current regulations. So there's quite a bit of work to be repaired, removed and reinstated. Inside, as I said, we will be doing a lot to the lower floor. On the first floor, we'll be installing a spiral staircase, an amazing floor to provide the access to the top. The research project, which I've talked about, the importance of the research project is very much to bring alive Happy Tower, but it will inform some exhibitions, some displays, presentations and walks. We want to bring this asset alive, we want to bring the heritage of this asset alive, and that's going to be quite important. We're going to have a tower visit programme, before, during and after. So hopefully, all the stakeholders, groups, organisations will want to get involved, and we hope that you will, because that's important. Website, social media, we will endeavour to keep everyone informed and advised of progress. Hopefully, you will see progress in the actual tower itself, but we'll certainly have a strong commitment to keep you informed. Another appeal, if I may, we're really keen to build up our library of images, pictures, et cetera, to include postcards. So if you know anyone who's got any postcards about the tower, please, we would love to see copies of them, because one of the exhibitions which will take place when the renovations are completed will include an exhibition of postcards. And the idea is the postcards will show tourism and ride during the ages. So if you've got some postcards, please, we'd love to see them, please share them. So we hope the work will commence with building rents approval, we then go out to tender. The aspiration is that we'll seek builders that do the work in May, with a view to appointing a lead contractor to undertake the work. And the idea, the hope, is that we start in July, August, and we'll take ten to twelve months to complete. So I'm hoping if we can hit the deadlines, that by the middle of twenty twenty-four, all the work will be completed. You'll be able to have access to the tower, and then we'll follow on with three exhibitions during the first six months when the tower is open. There are going to be some bumps in the road, projects of this ilk, you always come across challenges. I guess the one which possibly keeps me awake at night is cost inflation. We faced all of our figures upon February twenty twenty-two. We added ten percent inflation, thinking we wouldn't need that. We probably should have doubled that figure, the truth be known. So I think we wait with great anticipation what the tenders come back to us, what price, and we'll deal with the challenge that we face with it. I think that's the big bump in the road which we'll probably have to overcome, but we will. It's been an awful lot of commitment from a lot of partners, and I'm just very, very keen that we go forward and we can open the tower and it comes back into community use. Fingers crossed.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to say very quickly, and while the challenge is hitting, so. There's lots of stories about Happy Tower. Happy Tower was local for many hundreds of years, often a place for people to pose, for marriage, and often it's often used as a matter of weddings and things as a backdrop. Obviously, it's now the logo of Rye Town Council, which is fantastic. The best story I heard was around the beginning of, a few years before the First World War, a pride resident votes for top of the tower to propose to his loved one below. This was told by a family that were visiting the town, so this was their family story. And he, obviously, might have had a few drinks, declared his love and fell off the tower. And actually hit his head with, and had to go to hospital. And he had a, in those days, he had a metal pit put across his head. And they got married, he went off in nineteen fourteen to the First World War, and he survived, because when he was shot. And he survived, so that's a joy. I would like to, I think earlier I said about, you know, why there must be a carnival change, and a carnival. So I'm going to introduce Sharon. And so, and Sharon, to tell a little bit about the history of the wonderful Shedmakers, but also their vision to turn the wonderful Elizabeth Pack. My mum used to go there and have tea, and remember Elizabeth Pack? She'd come out and say, "Hello, Mrs. Lizzie, how are you?" "Why don't you have a cup of tea?" And then I'll come and show you my latest relish, which my mum was always scared, and then she had to buy some. But it's a delight that we're bringing this wonderful relief back to life. Over to you, Sharon.
Hello, I'm Sharon from Shedmakers, and I don't know if you know our work, but we're really an outdoor arts company. And we're all artists that are involved in our company. I'm not going to talk about Shedmakers, because we've gone for a long time, but why, why department? Well, as artists, we need somewhere to work, and we need somewhere to create those. Well, as artists, we need somewhere to work and we need somewhere to create those things. So even though we work outdoors, we need to create all what we're doing under a roof. And we were working in Roxhole in a lovely big industrial unit that had massive walls in the roof. And so they were very enjoying us with our costumes and everything. And the building next door burnt down and everything was being vandalised. And, you know, we were virtually trying to live in this building while we were building stuff that, you know, was really important that you couldn't, we couldn't make again. So we started to look for our new home. And first of all, we went to Sandown and we asked for the town hall. And I've still got the email that came back and it was just, no. From the Art Council. And then we got involved with conversations about Rye Theatre, Rye Town Hall. And Carol and Abby Wheeler Woods, we approached us and we started to look at that building. And we got as far as going to the bank and getting a mortgage, not to buy the old building because that just was way beyond our means, but to buy or to be involved in a part of that building. And they couldn't find the other two people that they needed. We were ready to go, but they couldn't find the other two people. And we lived in Rye and sat in French ranks and constantly looked across the road at Elizabeth Pax and went, that's a fantastic building. You could see the chairs anchored in the window, that'd be great. And I was talking to my next door neighbour about that building and I said, who owns that building? Because it was empty. She said, well, that's Tim. I used to work for Tim. I said, okay, can you, can you ring Tim and ask him to go and talk to us about that building? And he lives on the mainland. And she said, yeah, she said, I'll ring him and, and I'll ask him. So I didn't hear anything, so I knocked back on the door. Can you ask him to phone us, Carol? Can you, you know, can you just, you know, can you find out and find out if he'll speak to us? So I got a phone call and he said, I'm down in the building today, do you want to come and speak to me? So I run down the road and I went in there. About four hours later, I came out of the building with a massive headache going, this is amazing, that building is amazing. And I'd been in there and, you know, gone in for tea and tea cakes and everything. Took my daughter, who's now twenty-seven, when she was little, and she wondered why I'm in there. Lucky enough, I never bought anything because I don't think Mrs. Pax would have sold me anything in there. But I did go in there and had tea and cakes and everything. But I went in the building and it was empty, but I was just felt a part of the building. I just, it was just incredible. I could see everything that could happen in that building. So I went on to call and said, that building's amazing, absolutely amazing. Said to the rest of the team, we've got to sort of, you know, try and see if we can get that building. So I said to Tim, will you entertain us? We're a group of artists, we've got no money, but actually we've got ideas that could happen in this building. Will you let us go ahead with that? And he said, well, what are you planning? And I said, well, we'll try and get some money. We haven't got any money, but we'll try and get some money to make this building happen. And, and he supported us. We agreed to a ten-year lease with break clauses in there, which was totally honest with him. I said, three years and six-year break clauses, that means three years, we've got a chance of knowing whether we can get some money. Six years, we'll know whether we've got it. Will you do that? And he said, yeah, that's okay, we'll do that. So we did that and then, this was our golden autumn, we're about two thousand and nineteen. We were working in Oxford, the Story Museum, doing exhibition work and creating environments for them. And, and then obviously we hit the pandemic. So as an outdoor arts company, we stopped working, which is unusual for us because we work all the time and we're always busy and we're always working away and everything. And that just gave us time to think about what was important to us and what we wanted to do. And as a company, we work on the mainland a lot, doing a lot of regeneration work. But what we'd been saying for the last five years was, we wanted to do this where we live and where we work. We were tired of going to Gloucester and Margate and the Hastings and all those places doing that regeneration work. But we wanted to do it here, where we live. And, and this building gave us the opportunity to do that. I know, I didn't look at the screen, sorry. But basically, so we wanted to do that. So it gave us time to slow down and we started to look at what we would, how we did that. So we found some architects, we asked them to do a feasibility study. We paid for the feasibility study, we took, cutting all of our wages and paid for the feasibility study. And when that came back to us, we just couldn't believe what we could see. You know, I've, I've never done anything with buildings, you know, shorters or changing the kitchen, I haven't done anything. So they drew all of these pictures for us and the old building just came alive and all the building has been used. So what you've seen in there is only two floors, there's three floors, there's back rooms. And it was just incredible. And it just showed how that old building could be used for lots of different things. I think there's sixteen different areas of that building that we're going to recreate a theatre space in there, the cinema, there's studio spaces, a cafe, kitchen, because food's very important to us, if you know us, you'll know that. Exhibition space, just lots of flexible space for people to come in and use the building. But what also we've learnt since being in that building is how much it means to us to be in the centre of a community, to be in the centre of the town. We worked in an industrial unit where we had, you know, we just worked in there, the doors was closed, big shutter door used to come down. And we'd see the community and we'd see our friends and family when we went outdoors. When we went into that building, we suddenly had those massive big windows and we started putting those exhibitions in the windows. And we started seeing people and talking to people. And people were coming in to us and saying, this is so exciting, slipping postcards and notes under the door saying, we'd love seeing your windows. Coming in, giving us flowers, saying it really cheered us up and everything. And suddenly we had a connection with everybody outside. We were listening to the comments in the, in the bus stops and everything. And it was just incredible. It was something that we just didn't know, really. And so then the building became incredibly important to us and the heritage of the building. And we're really privileged to be in that building. What we're finding out about that building is we've got the history right the way back to the seventeen hundreds. There was makers on that site in seventeen hundred. There was cabinet makers and a white smith and a black smith that were on that site. And when Woods and Wilkins built the building in the eighteen sixties, we've got the records that show there was thirty-two men who always worked in that building. We've got all, you know, the whole history now. We're finding things under the floorboards that we're keeping, cigarette packets and crisp packets and cake wrappers and all kinds of things. We've found a German paper from nineteen sixty, don't worry about that. But we're finding all kinds of things. So we respect the building and we're just going to basically be another part of the story of the building. And I'm going to hand over to Jo, you'll tell you about what's happened.
So in any kind of regeneration projects, it's great that we can kind of have that investment to be able to support the change of the building so that we can make things happen. But the really important thing is being able to actually make those things happen. And so since we moved into the building in halfway through twenty twenty-one, we have trialled out a number of different events, workshops, classes, performances that have kind of brought the community together in many different artistic and creative ways. We've worked with our partner organisations, so we've got within the building, we have Shade Makers, we have Stitch Department, who are a CIC, who about sustainable fashion and teaching all sorts of people of different ages about sewing. And we also have Ride Arts, who've helped with some amazing window projects where we've got artists who are working in the windows, who are having connection with the people outside. And I'm from Horst Wux Theater and we've been creating performances within the space as well. And those, all of these about being able to create things for the community, also that reflect the community. So for example, we did, the last performance we had in the building was called Ride Boy. It was a piece created where we recreated the King Lad pub inside the barn at the back of Department. We told story, the story of a group of lads from Rye. It looked at mental health, it looked at all sorts of different challenging topics within the play. But it was about the community and it really, like, we're very proud to be able to create something that really was, had Rye at its heart. And then hopefully it will have a life outside. Hopefully we can create a space here that is an incubator space for new work, a space where people can try things out, can fail. And can also create amazing things that will have a great life, you know, off-island in a way that have been made and proudly made in Rye. We're really fortunate to work with so many different artists who can come and use the space of, of, embraced the use of the window. We've had artists who've had residencies, I'm sure you've seen many of them, who've then gone on to have more of a relationship with the people of the town and have really kind of embraced working and creating here. We've also been able to celebrate this with performance things that have happened in those windows as well. We've trialled out research and developed pieces. We even have a dog wedding the other week, which is surreal, but it was great. And it's all about that engagement. We've had people rehearsing, there were some fantastic days where we kind of feel like this is what it's going to be like when this building is open. Where we've had a sewing class going on, we've had our youth program, which is Satse Club, where we have fantastic young people who get free access to arts and creative activities. We have had rehearsals going on, we've had a performance in the evening. Those, those kind of days are exactly what this building is going to be like. It's going to be buzzing, full of, of creative energy. And because of that, we can then employ, you know, actors to be able to perform here, which is something incredibly rare on the Isle of Wight. We can get theatre makers to come over to create something new. We can get artists to think innovatively about how they're going to display their work. So we're not just, you know, paintings on a white wall. We're actually thinking creatively with mixed media, with a mixed media, with lighting, the sound, with all sorts of things. We're challenging artists to think bigger. So, so far we've been, from the outside, it may appear that we're a little bit shut with our doors shut. We've actually had a, a number of events over the last few years. We've kind of, we've been beavering away, creating and creating a really exciting programme. At the moment, we've had about eighty-eight events so far since opening. And they've ranged from, this weekend, we hosted a Fashion Revolution event, which saw about sixty people come along to hear some speak, hear some speakers about some sustainable fashion. They've also had a, a sustainable fashion fair to go alongside that. We've had a number of performances, classes, workshops, loads of different activities that have seen about four thousand people actually come into the building in that time. So it's a really significant number of people accessing our, our arts activities. We're super, super proud of what we've made so far. It's all been about creating this work, having a hub to be able to do that and to be able to celebrate it and share it with the community. And we've got lots of exciting things before we get booted out by the builders in September. So we've got last kind of summer to cram in as much stuff before the scaffolding goes up. And then we'll be beavering away even harder to create an amazing programme for when we reopen. So this summer, we have the Return of Ride Boy, which is going to be in August. We've got a new, a musical, which is not a new, it's not a new musical, it's a, it's been on Broadway, the West End, it's an incredible show called The Last Five Years, which has just got two performers. They're incredibly talented, local musical theatre performers and we're very privileged to have them and a live band. So we're testing new things, we're trialling out musicals, we're trialling out new plays. We've also got Stitch Department, have just been awarded an incredible grant from Arts Council, which means that this summer they can deliver a programme of really great sewing workshops, classes, masterclasses, exhibitions. And also a heritage fashion show, which will be the last piece before the building shuts. Where we can, Elizabeth Pax is one of those builders that always had fashion shows, it's a great event. And we're going to celebrate that in an incredible contemporary fashion show. And also we're going this summer featuring the start of Adastro, which is our Shade Makers Carnival piece this year. And we've got a number of artist residencies working with Ride Arts. So you'll see lots more incredible window displays, loads of different ways you can engage with Department between now and the middle of September. And do get in touch, find out what we're doing. I know sometimes it seems like you're not sure what's going on, but there are loads of different ways of finding out. You can go on our website, which is now live, has an amazing heritage page. You can flick back to the beginning of the building, see the whole history of what's happened. You can, we'll update it on our transformation photos as well. We're also on social media, Department Ride. Just reach out, chat to us, you can always have a look round, you can always come to any of our events. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very incredibly exciting project. But also there's a range, what is happening in Rye is you've got a range of different eclectic venues, right? I've just been visiting the depositary today. It's called the Montague, or the, the Montague, Montague, sorry. A fabulous exhibition about transport in Rye there at, at the moment. You have different venues. Bob, who's now the Chair of the Rye Business Association for the Star. You've got, you've got a, a real atmosphere of different establishments. And out of that, there is collaborations in there and creativity and that's really happening. And actually, we've now got someone who's looking at having Rye Fringe Festival or looking at that. There is people that are talking to Rye City Council about having comedy on the beach in, in the summer and classical music on the beach. We did have an opera scene in front of the tower a couple of years ago. So, so things are actually starting to really be a melting pot of creativity and activity. And that then brings investment in the town. And one of the things that I've been launching, having a mayor's gala, my last event on the thirteenth of May. This is a fundraising event, but to launch Rye Community Development Trust, Charitable Trust. We actually now have a charitable trust that will work with organisations like the, the Department now. Different, you know, small charities already doing some work around food, poverty and food security. Working with people like Grace's Bakery, that's looking about giving free flour to make bread in schools and things. But basically be a hub and to enable Rye to have all, to get all the different kinds of sources of finance. To about the very important thing, my last bit is when I was a child, I learned this, right? Here is the church, here is the temple and you open it up and it's the people. And the most important thing in Rye is the people. Because if you get the people, the innovation, wonderfully presented by Jo and Sharon and, and thanks. Once you've got the people, they create the investment. Because funders want to know the people. The government's used investment fund wasn't interested in St Thomas, right? We were interested in St Thomas, we wanted that. They were interested in what was going to happen inside of it. And that's the most thing. And I think Jo really demonstrated that. You've got to show what's actually happening in this building. In the last few weeks, a big international theatre company that goes all around the world is actually looking at whether they could be based in. They've already been involved with the LGBT community, particularly out of Ireland, for the protect. And, you know, they're kind of, and that is what's going to happen to this town. We are going to come alive and we've built the infrastructure over the last four years. We have a fantastic group of councillors that are diverse and cover lots of skills. And we have a wonderful community here, so thank you. Right, this is where we can open up for, include design for questions. And we'll maybe sort of answer if you want to, asking official councillors and councillors, who all will be able to help and respond to. So, any questions? Because that's good. Talk about questions.
I don't know, Michael Watson, I wonder if I could just ask for this. You had a very important bullet early on about acknowledging the need for maintenance better now and in the future. And you've got four beach huts for your Rye, which can produce safety. They will also require some maintenance. And if I understand the concept, I expect that you envisage a lot more regularly used and perhaps occasionally used in some of the neighbours. And if you, of course, know, they'll need you this, I wonder if you've taken those sort of things into consideration?
Yes, we have. Obviously with every plan, you've got to start somewhere.
Obviously, with every plan, you've got to start somewhere. We estimated, with support from the Architectural Survey, we think the running cost for the tower are going to be probably somewhere in the region of about twenty thousand pounds a year. So, and the expectation is the beach huts will cover the large majority, if not all of that, and leave a certain amount in a contingency fund to deal with the water scenario. So, we're fairly confident, based upon the figures which we put together, that the beach huts will service the long-term funding requirements of the town, and that's really, really important, because all the hard work which has gone in to get us to this point, if we don't maintain the tower, we don't self-fund it, if you like, we could slip back quite quickly. So, obviously, it depends on the occupancy of the beach huts. To perhaps emphasise the confidence we have, is if we, if it was purely about an income generator, we would probably let them for the season, but it's very, very important to us that the beach huts are available on short term, to allow many members of the community to benefit from the beach huts. So, hopefully, we've got the balance right between community use of the beach huts, but self-funding the future repairs, and the maintenance of the tower. I think, yeah, I sort of, I don't want to overstate it, but I'm fairly comfortable, my background is in finance, and I feel there's sufficient margin that we've got enough money coming in to support the long-term need. What I would say is, all the funds which does come in will stay within the Apple Tower project, so they're not going to be sent somewhere else, or used, they'll be used for the Apple Tower project. So, I would like to think over year by year, we'll build that to deal with the replacement of beach huts, et cetera.
I think, Roy, answering the question, Lily, one of the things with all these three projects particularly, is you have to jump over so many hurdles, and things like sustainability in the long term, they put you through the real raps on that. So, the actual process of these three projects in getting funding has made the Bay of Huts to really get their figures checked and checked and checked. And it's quite difficult, it's not easy to get money out of these funds now without actually showing really strong sustainability within that. So, your question, gentleman's back?
Jonathan Letherton. I recently seen a document produced by Bright Space Architects, and they were the architects that designed St Thomas' Church, or the interior.
Yeah.
A Bright Space did a feasibility study, Liam Mu is the architect who's done the internal design that you saw in the presentation there.
Have you gone with their drawings?
No, we're Liam Mu's, we're using Liam Mu's.
Right, well, that's a waste of money. Right at the end of that study, it had plans for Baptist Hall, and drawings for Baptist Hall, which is greatly disconcerting, as you know. And one of these plans was to take it to demolition, obviously. So, I want to give assurance from the council that this won't happen, and they will respect its weight in the area.
There are no plans to not wreck this hall there.
Sorry?
There are no plans to not wreck this hall there.
Well, there are in Bright Space.
Oh, no, we spoke about this before, there are no plans, there are no plans for the building, Jonathan, and there are no plans of demolishing.
Right. You've had, since two thousand and nine, the councils have been expressing concern about Baptist Hall in this terrible state. And, you know, so far, you've owned it for two years, and there hasn't been any plans to do anything with it. Are there any plans to do anything with it? On the Bright Spaces, they had said that you're going to make it into ant offices, and I believe you're looking at the Mac West Building as ant offices, so that sort of goes round and round and so on.
Can I? So, the Bright Spaces, I'll have to, if you don't mind, the Bright Spaces have hardly any plans for that building, there are no definitive plans for the building. We are in the process of allowing a heritage group charter, if you give us a report on the building, that's the next step.
You've got the heritage document, but in the Bright Space document?
No, 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 we haven't, no, we haven't.
Can I, can I just, just a moment, I'm looking, I'm going to fix the question, go on. We've had examples tonight, for instance, Apple Tower, how long it actually takes to actually get the building, particularly historical, historical. And actually, compared to others, compared to other white councils and things, Ride is doing pretty well. We've got, we're now looking very much at Baptist, we are getting the right expertise, and there is a number of conversations about uses for it, because as I said, you've got to actually get the people. We were successful with St Thomas' Church and getting the funding, because we were very clear about the people being in it. And that is what we work in, we have a community development worker now, who started last year, he's now talking to the community, because one of the things that we as a council decided was that Baptist Hall was an important historic community building. A councillor Ross over there could, you know, could tell you about the dancing and the things that went on there. That was the view, and that is being worked on, but that takes time, and actually, people are working on it, and they will present it back to this council, there's a working group that's actually looking at this, and we will then come back to it. But we're very focused on delivery, and at the moment, we're doing pretty well by having three projects being presented tonight, that actually get buildings that have the beauty of it. Jonathan Letherton, I think I've answered your question.
I was just going to ask, if you could tell me that the steering group is at Mr Public, that is looking, managing.
It isn't at the moment, because you have to have circumstances to it, but it can, it will be presented back at committee meetings, and then you will have an opportunity in those public meetings to speak.
Thank you very much, Charlotte, I just wanted to say, I'm so absolutely thrilled that Shave Makers and the Department, that they're currently working on that building, I think it's absolutely tremendous, it's right. I'm so happy you're working in my town, and doing that to uplift the profile of where I live, and my grandchildren and my family will enjoy that, and I think for generations to come, and also, we call more businesses in, bring more money into our community, and there's more resourceful, and it's just immense, so thank you very much.
Can I have, ask two questions, yes, Stella?
Stella Davis, the Ride Society. I wanted just to have a moment on hers. We know that, so it's quite a lot been done, I've very, I've seen the expenditure, and I just wondered how the council's planning to manage the future of this, because we still haven't got our pedestrian area, our public realm, or our trees, and I wondered if this was still going to happen.
I do know that we've been successful through the White Council, which again, I think another seven hundred thousand, well-ish, into it, perhaps I can put it over to the councillors, Jonathan, to update, so you're actively involved.
Yeah, we, we, we've had good feedback for my grant funding visit, we made under active travel, around seven hundred thousand we've applied on, and good feedback, that's a potential grant funding award to us. That would go on top of a fair half a million that's already in, that has, I should act on, but in is about one to one point two million to complete the high stroke, that's between Gofford Road and Star Street, that's surfacing and public grounds, seeking greenery and so on. It's, well, it's good, darling, Stella.
Thank you.
Well, it's good, darling, because the project has to be finished by next March, anyway.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm just going to say three more questions, your gentleman first, then I can back and then, no?
We mentioned at the start about more involvement with Southern Water, and sort of really trying to push for better sewage. Well, I've sort of, I've got an idea, but I'd like to put to you about there could be a sensible sewage treatment plant in Ride, which wouldn't affect our behaviour, this is a very remote place, and I think that is what they need to do, because I put a piece in the paper about, two, a year ago, about how when they were doing the seafront repairs, the Welshman that was doing it advised, in quite a small group, I suppose, it was only just coping now, and when you have five hundred houses in small, which will happen eventually, you do need provision for those as well as you are, that sort of, you know, for that. And it's a rural area, which I think will be down, and...
Well, I'm happy to link you on to Southern Water, around that, that is very open, they've got a presentation, they're very open for people, probably needing to come forward with ideas, so I'm happy to, 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 I think what we have got is they are, part of the problem with the sewage coming out into the sea, is the fact that everything goes into one drain, so basically, the sewage and then the rainwater comes in, we have torrential rain, and it just goes out. What they have done now is they've got agreement from the environmental agency to increase the flow from a hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty, of going from the plant at Apple to Sandown. So, that, you know, they can't deny, there were a hundred and thirty-three spillages last year, that should take out a hundred, that leaves thirty-five, which is the legal limits, but they legally can do it in a year. But what they're, what they're saying is, if you could reduce the water that comes off the roofs, you know, by having water butts in the house, this has been piloted in Haven Street, and they reduce by seventy percents of the water going in, just by having water butts in all the houses. So, then, but I think one of the things is, we are having that to ourselves, and they are actually wanting to actually do things, which is better than after a year ago, when they didn't really talk to us, they are actually talking to us. Yes, last question.
I just want to say that.
Oh, I'm getting, sorry, sorry.
No, let the lady, no, let the lady sit, go.
These three projects are such inspiration for any of us who are working on other projects, so thank you, you set an incredible example, and keep the rest, give the rest of his hope. So, with that in mind, I just wonder if there's anything new to report about Ride Town Hall Theatre?
I think I'm getting a nod from there, I think what I can say is that there has been continuing talks, right? The thing with the town hall, I think compared to the projects, what Ride has done is with these smaller projects, is we're building up the reputation that we can actually deliver of that. The town hall is the big one, that's going to need about five million, if not more, to actually do, and there's a total commitment to have that, because we can't not, it is historic to the town, and also practically, if it starts to fall down, it falls down in Middle Street, and we're all then screwed, aren't we, because we're the town. So, we've got to do something about it, and there is a commitment to do about it, but we've got to build up to have a platform of actually getting that funding. And there is quite a lot of, it's very difficult, because you want transparency, and you want honesty, and you want to do this thing, but in some cases, when you're dealing, particularly with private owners, right, you've got to do a lot of conversation behind the scenes. All I can assure you all is that those talks are going on continually to have that, and I think this year we will probably break through to be able to then go to the next stage, and obviously, working with the likes of the Friends or the Town Hall, because, again, it's people, unless you've got people involved, these things are not going to happen.
Yes, my concern, a lot of people who know me will know that I followed the bid, that where lots of our businesses are taxed, you know, and it's under a big question mark. However, I was majorly concerned in November, when the lead for regeneration was suggesting that we have a town bid taxing all our retail shops. Now, there's, all around, I've been following the story all around the country, and there's a lot of corruption going on. The question was not answered at that meeting, as to if they're already paying a levy, and this comes in, will they pay a second levy on top of that?
I'm not sure whether, I have to be...
Interesting, isn't it, that half, you know, lots of people don't know about it, because the bids around the country got pushed in because people didn't know about it.
What I'd need to do is to go around, because I'm actually, I've got a question I want to answer. What I can actually say from an advocacy point of view, and I know from the Ride businesses, I've been going around talking to all of them, all the different sizes, whether it's Ride School, which is a corporate business in this town, to the Star, to the Grace's Bakery, they need investment, and they need, you know, more visitors, and they need, you know, the town to come alive, so that they then invest in their businesses and develop. They don't need further tax.
I'm glad to hear you say that.
So, I'm sure we as a council will be very militant in actually...
I'd like to think so, because we already have a suicidal person that I represented when I went to council, you know, one of the levy payers.
I assure you then, I'm now going to actually wipe that, because thank you for coming, you can see that this town is buzzing, I feel very proud that stepping down as mayor, what a fabulous town that this is. So, thank you for coming. If you want to stay behind and talk to any of the councillors or anyone?